Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. From now on, we're going to begin the afternoon session for the Digital Economy Forum. So, the start of the afternoon program will be a special session. So, we're going to meet five CEOs of five startups who are leading the change and innovation in the digital economy of the post-COVID era. So, first of all, I would like to invite Mr. Kim Gihwan, who is the CEO of MediHere. He is joining us from the US. It was quite late at night there. So, please, we're going to listen to Mr. Kim first and officially kick off the special session. Please go ahead.
Ah, yeah. Hello, everyone.
I am Kim Gihwan from MediHere. It's a pleasure to meet you.
네, 저희 메디히어는 지금 미국과 한국에서 원격 진료 플랫폼 메디히어를 지금 서비스하고 있습니다. 지금부터 메디히어에 대한 서비스 소개를 진행하겠습니다.
Now, I'm going to go about with the overview of our platform.
메디히어는 가정의학과 전문의가 1차 의료 분야에서 원격 진료를 정기 구독 멤버십으로 제공하는 서비스를 미국을 중심으로 제공을 드리고 있습니다. 지금 미국에서는 이연지 가정의학과 전문의가 본인 진행해 주고 계시고, 한국에서는 닥오승민 조동영 이재용 원장께서 진행을 해주시고 계십니다. 저희 서비스는 주요 타계 시장은 미국입니다. 무제한 원격 진료의 차방 멤버십을 1년에 100식구물이라는 합리적인 가격에 미국의 한인분들과 기업분들에게 제공드리고 있습니다. 한국에서는 나만의 온라인 주식 멤버십을 연간 월에 만원 정도로 개인이 개업하기 위해 제공하고 있고, 코로나 시대에 대면 진료로 가족이 부담이 가는 많은 고객분들이 사용해 계십니다.
저희 메디히어 원격 진료 멤버십에 대한 메디컬 케어, so they are using our platform. And this is a video about our MediHere platform and also our membership. So, you can see that there is a chatbot that provides consultation as well as pre-medical examination services. And there are patients who do not want to show their faces while having this type of consultation. So, they can use this chat service to chat with our chatbot. And you can see that we have implemented the same process in the United States and also in Korea. And their services are available in Korean and also in English. So, this is how it works. So, this is how we provide our telemedicine services. So, these are the challenges that we would like to overcome. So, our primary market is the US. So, let me focus on the US market. So, the medical fee and the insurance fee in the US is very high. And it is one of the leading factors for the individual personal bankruptcy in the US. So, patients in the US, they have to bear the deductible fees. And this deductible fees are on constant increase. And in the US, a patient has to wait on average 24 days to meet their GPs. So, primary medical care is very lacking. And so, as for Korean Americans, due to language barrier, so they have hard time leveraging the medical services in the US. So, because of language and money and time barrier, a lot of Korean Americans fail to seek medical service. So, our solution is that we want to provide a seamless and continued telemedical medicine services for their primary medical care. So, a lot of actually, by doing so, we can actually reduce a premature mortality rate by 19% and save 33% of medical fees. So, that is why these are some of the advantages of the telemedicine. And that's why we want to provide these services. So, the primary care in Korea is actually done, provided by family medicine doctors. And in the US, primary care is taken care of by the GPs. So, you can see that most of the diseases are covered by the primary care. So, like cough, allergies, and insomnia, eating disorders are covered by primary care. So, what we want to do is to provide these type of telemedicine services by the family medicine doctors. And this membership is provided at a very affordable price of $119 per ear. Available both in Korean and also in English. So, there is a MediHere clinic that is eight-minute walking distance from the Korean town in New York. So, we provide different kinds of medical services, including prescription and face-to-face consultation. And MediHere has applied AI technology to our telemedicine platform. So, all these data that are accumulated will be learned by our machine. And we hope to improve the accuracy as well as efficacy of our medical care that is provided. So, our services target primarily the US and the Korean market. We want to expand our services in these markets. As for the US, you know, there's a high insurance fees and the medical fees. So, we target people who are covered by low level of insurance or uninsured. And we want to expand our presence in the US in the near future. So, as you can see that the Korean-American market in the US is quite isolated. So, we believe that it to be a blue ocean. But we also have a target to scale up our services across the United States. So, we want to draw lessons and based on that, we want to secure our competitiveness of the technology and expand our businesses. So, the Teladoc Mnet is not the target that we want to target. So, we want to actually target the primary care telemedicine providers as our competitors. So, in Korea, there has been a limited rollout of our service. And we are providing this service at a free of charge in the Korean market even today. And telemedicine care, medical care, and the prescription, as well as payment, insurance, coverage, claims, all of these are being done through our platform. And as for the membership in Korea, so it will be supported by the family medicine doctors in Korea, who will provide a primary medical care to individuals or to businesses. So, the individual customers or the companies can use our services at a monthly fee of 9,000 Korean won. So, faced with COVID-19 era, there is an increasing need for telemedicine. And we want to expand our membership in terms of telemedicine and prescription. We want to expand this membership to apply to patient monitoring devices. And we also want to scale up that way, but we also want to scale out. So, we want to expand our business, going from New York to California, across the United States. And also the target from Korean-Americans to Chinese and the general American public. So, we also have other plans for plans of expansion strategy. We want to actually provide a centralized medical concierge platform, connecting all of these different devices. A lot of partners are working with us today. And we are together working towards seeking rapid growth. This is what the Fast Company CEO said. So, going to the hospital with a very light disease will not be so unfamiliar in the future. It will be the same as going out to a video rental store and renting out a video. It will be that accessible. So, we believe that our platform of services will be useful to the Korean-Americans as well as the Koreans who are living in Korea. Thank you. And this wraps up my presentation. Thank you for listening. Thank you very much, Mr. Kim, for your presentation. I'm sure that a lot of people who are watching this session would be interested to know, have learned a lot about the MediHere services. And facing this COVID-19 era, MediHere will, I hope that it will blossom or thrive as a more innovative platform provider. Now, moving on. Now, I'd like to invite Mr. Chen Sangyeon from Now Buzzking.
네, 안녕하세요. 소상공인을 위한 IT 서비스를 하고 있는 Now Waiting, 서비스를 제공하는 Now Buzzking의 전상열입니다. 반갑습니다. 네, 저희는 소상공인을 위한 IT 서비스를 만들어 가고 있는데요.
We provide IT services for small businesses. And we're very much focused on FNB market. The FNB market is a market that's used by Koreans every two days. And it is growing at a speed of 10% every year. So, it is a market that we need to focus on. And at the core of this business, there are small businesses. But the small businesses, unlike large companies, are very much marginalized in the IT industry. The small businesses lack resources. So, they, it is a one-man company, or they have to do a lot of things on their own. And they're suffering from a lot of difficulties. And IT technologies can provide a lot of benefit to small businesses. But small businesses are not in the environmental condition to adopt and implement IT technologies. On the other hand, large companies have a large amount of pool of resources. And it is very easy for them to digitalize. That is a delve deeper. So, in the FNB market, there are two main things. So, there's employees and also customers that are very important factors. If you listen to what customers say, they say, you know, the labor cost has gone up. And also, it is very difficult to provide quality services. And a lot of employees come and go. So, it is very important for business, small businesses, to actually retain these employees. And with the development of IT services in the past, we did not use those kind of food delivery platform services nowadays. But nowadays, with Uber Eats entering the market, the Korean market, they actually withdrew from the Korean market. So, a lot of small businesses continue to train their part-timers and also the employees at the same time. And at the same time, address these challenges that I mentioned to you about. And the management of customer data has become increasingly difficult. If you visit other restaurants, you may have felt this. A lot of the owners who are affectionate about their restaurants, they recognize their clients, but the regular clients. But all of these information is not actually stored and managed in the form of a database. But it is very much dependent on the memory of the owner. So, we need to really digitalize all of this. But small businesses are unable to do so. And this year, we were hard hit by COVID-19. So, with COVID-19, small businesses are suffering more. In the past, you know, if your store is in a retail zone that is quite popular, you were able to insure some kind of footfall. But nowadays, there are not many people out on the streets. No matter how clean your store is, how safe your store is, small businesses cannot actually send out the message to their regulars to come and visit them, visit their stores. So, that is why they have changed their mindset. So, a lot of the small businesses in the past actually wanted to attract a lot of customers to enjoy their services or their food. But we, they're reducing their face-to-face businesses. And they actually realized the need to increase the contact-free services. And they feel the need to be able to manage the customer information and data. And they feel the need to maintain the contact point with their customers. So, this is the conclusion that we draw. So, what the FNB stores need is threefold. First is the digitalization of the stores. Everything that was done face-to-face. For example, in a restaurant where there are lots of lines, you know, when people come in, you have to tell them you have to wait 30 minutes. There are three or four teams in front of you. But all of that should be and will be digitalized. And as for the ordering before, employees would ask the orders. But now, a lot of kiosk and contact-free machine-based order is the popular. And all of these contact-free services will be connected with the customer communication. So, there'll be less communication with the customer face-to-face. So, this communication need to be continued on a contact-free basis. And once the communication starts digitally, it is very important to scale it out online. So, there are customers who are not visiting offline stores, who are resistant to visiting the offline stores. We have to attract them to the online space. In order to address these challenges, we actually have set up this vision to make this place a better place. We want to leverage the IT technology we're competitive in in order to address the inefficiencies of the space that we're in, to improve the space that we're in, and to make sure that people will be more fond of the space that we're operating in. So, this is a short video of our business, our company. So, we are known for Now Waiting service, a non-face-to-face service. So, for example, when there are restaurants where a lot of people are waiting in line, they can actually register information. And once it is their turn to get into the restaurant, they will get notified through a message. So, this is a video that explains about the Now Waiting service. So, how is Now Waiting used in a cafe? This is a pause ordering system. So, the employee actually can get an order with the quick menu. And the customer can accumulate his or her miles and registers or keys in the contact number. So, it is eighth, it's her eighth visit. So, the system knows the customer. So, it is very important to attract the hearts of your regulars. And also, try to use the kiosk when ordering. So, customers will key in his contact number, and the coupons are automatically issued. So, you can also automatically pay and get your stamps. So, the operational fee for the store owner also goes down. And all these orders are managed in an integrated manner. So, you can also view the orders in order. And you don't need to print out paper receipts as well. So, while you're preparing the menu, the customer will actually have a look at the Kakao channel of the store and add the store to their channel. And then, the customer can send the messages about the store through Kakao channel to their friends. So, once the food or the beverage is ready, with one click on the KDA screen, you can call your customer. The customer can get the information through a vocal message or can get a message through Kakao Talk, a pick-up alarm talk. And you can also get the orders from the Kakao Talk chatbot ordering system. So, you can also pay automatically. And you can actually order before you visit the store to minimize your time wasted. So, let us now check the sales of today. So, from the order, payment, accumulation of miles, and to calling out of the customers, everything can be addressed through Now Waiting. So, all the data are stored in the system. So, you can have a look at the daily sales and also the regular customers as well. And you can see that there are lots of regulars contacting our customers. So, please, try to use the Now Waiting CRM to attract your customers. Your customers will become more fond of your store, and you will get more fans for your stores. What kind of services would your store need? IT services for the small businesses, please get consulting for Now Waiting. So, the video talks about a lot of things. So, first of all, you know, small businesses, small stores, you can see that their ordering channels are quite diverse. There is face-to-face order or kiosk and non-face-to-face ordering. And all of these ordering channels, channel all the orders. And all of these orders channeled through will be managed in one system. When you call out the customer, you know, you can do it via mobile or face-to-face. And all of this data become the customer data. And the store will remember who the customers are and customers are, and will better serve the customers. So, Now Waiting actually gathers the customer data offline and online. And there are lots of stores that are joining in our initiative, and they're using our system. And there are about 200, 2,600 stores that have adopted our system. And about 18 million users are using our system, our services. And more than 2 billion transactions are taking place every year. So, you can see that there is order data, visit data, and the payment data that are being accumulated in a database. So, it's not just a matter of collecting the data, but it's very important to preserve and maintain the contact point with the customers. So, this is a talk. So, actually, you can use the Kakao Talk to process all of these, processes all of these orders. And naturally, the store can actually develop and preserve the contact points with the customers. So, all of these customer data will be used to categorize our clients or customers. It's very difficult to categorize the customers. So, you can see that there's a categorization from new customers to regular customers, regular customers, average customers, and so forth. And these are some of the examples of the CRM usages. So, for example, we actually select 300 people who have waited the most in line in a restaurant and give them out presents. And also, you can give out presents or gifts to the customers who waited for a long time to get their food in the store. So, you can see that we were able to see the revisit rate going, spanning from 30% to 70%. So, all of the activities that are taking place in the store, entering, ordering, payment, and food manufacturing, sales management, and CRM. So, all of these steps in the cycle are put into data and are analyzed. So, as I said, the offline data and data analytics are combined. And we want to scale out our business online. So, online scale out is the following. So, as I said, a lot of the stores in the past actually wanted to sell more products to the customers who are visiting the stores. But we want the customers who went back to reorder the customers, reorder the products or services through online. And we want them to be able to give this kind of present, like a food voucher or coupon, to their friends to share their experience. So, as I said, we want to collect better the offline data of our customers that are in our stores. We want to continue to connect these data with our customer services. And we want to scale out our businesses based on these analytics so that we can improve the lives of the store owners. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, that was Mr. Chen from Now Buzzking.
Actually, when we talk about the platform online, this is about the natural way of collecting data from the customers. But SMEs or mom-and-pop store owners who are working offline have difficulty of gathering the data from the customers, let alone making a collection of database. But if they just listen to his presentation and his business, they will be benefited a lot. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Lee Hye-sin from 8% for another presentation. His business is very much diversified for the SMEs. And also, the fintech is another area that Mr. Lee is going after.
Hello. I am Yoo Jin from 8%. So, you know, we're faced with a lot of challenges due to COVID-19. And it is indeed my first time for me to step on stage and talk in front of an empty public. But I'm sure that after we overcome these challenges, we'll be happy to see the faces of the participants who are physically present in the meeting. So, today, I'm going to talk about the acceleration of the untaxed or contact-free finance. As you can see, this is the content of my presentation, a brief review of our company 8%. I'd like to talk about what kind of financial trend changes that we're seeing. And I would like to talk about the post-COVID era. So, in the post-COVID era, what kind of changes that we need to focus on? So, 8% is a company that has actually entered the market, the financial loan market, of 8 trillion won at a low and medium interest rate. So, you can see that there's been a lot of gap between different loan, interest rate-related loans in the past. From 2010 to 2016, there's been a lot of high-rate loans. But from the mid-2015, we're seeing a lot of middle-rate loans that are appearing. And as of end of 2017, out of the household debts of about 70% of those debts were more than 20% interest rate. So, we, so that is why we've seen emergence of a lot of companies targeting the mid-rate loan market. And we've seen a lot of growth of this market ever since. So, in 2019, this portion has increased to 50% out of the entire household debt. If you look at the end of 2017, 2018, you can see that the outstanding balance of the high-interest rate has not decreased. So, you can see that there are lots of people who are still taking out high-interest rate loans. So, 8% is focused on implementing the P2P approach for the first time in the financial market. So, we efficiently contact or connect the borrowers as well as investors. And we are focused on attracting the borrowers as well as providing the loans and also the management, managing the loans. So, we're trying to reduce the interest rates of the borrowers. So, we've seen a high growth. And we have become a number-one player in terms of middle-interest rate, personal or household credit rate, credit loan. And our loan amount is 25 trillion won. And we're seeing a lot of growth. So, behind this high of high growth, there is an automated system. So, we have about repayment transactions of 6 million transactions per month. And we're also handling about 1,000 loans per month. So, we have a quite solid IT background or foundation. And one of the biggest buzzwords in our sector, even within the finance sector, within the P2P world, it is the implementation of the law. So, the Online Investment Related Finance Act was enacted and was implemented from last August. So, we believe that the P2P business will pick off, pick up. And this is very meaningful in Korea and also around the world. Because we were the first in the world to implement the P2P Lending Act. And in Korea, the lending license was actually created for the first time in 17 years. So, our 8% is, has actually, is, has now engaged in the online investment-related finance businesses as well. So, you can say that we have managed to gain more trust and confidence in the market. So, with that, I briefly explain about what 8% is about. And now, I'm going to talk about the current trends. So, before COVID-19, of course, there was an acceleration also of contact-free banking. So, there are lots of online, offline stores that were closing shop and moving to online. But nobody had difficulty, we did not have a lot of difficulties because we could take out loans through mobile phones. And during the COVID-19, you know, it was possible to also, actually, the people, a number of people who are opening up their accounts online increased 50%, by 50% to 80% compared to a pre-COVID era. So, you can see that the contact-free financing has accelerated and has taken off. And 8% is also a prime untaxed service company provider. And for the past four years, we have seen a CAGR of 73% growth. And in the financial market during the COVID-19 era, one of the biggest changes was the unpredicted, the uncertainty about the future. So, even though you have a job now, you know, you still feel uncertain about the future. And that is why people are taking out a lot of loans. And you can see that the household loan and the mortgage loans have increased a lot. And because the interest rate is low and the future is uncertain, because of that uncertainty, and in order to invest and speculate, a lot of people are taking out a maximum amount of loan. So, 8% has noticed this type, identified these type of trends. And a lot of our customers have a credit rating of grade 4 to 7. So, it's a middle-level grading. From the first quarter and third quarter, we've seen a lot of loan taken out by high-credit rate, credit worth clients. So, a lot of high-credit rate worth of clients are taking out a lot of loans. And they're using our services to get more loans than before. And during the COVID-19, one of the biggest financial trend was the trying to make your investments. And households are making a lot of investments. And you're also taking out loans to invest in stock and stock market. And the university students, college students are taking out loans to invest in the stock market as well. And a lot of people, who, young people who used to invest in luxury goods last year are now investing in the stock market. And the same applies to the real estate market. And the real estate market, there's not been a lot of transaction because of the real estate app that's been implemented. But they, people are taking out credit loans in order to purchase apartments. And that portion has increased a lot. Especially people in their 30s are looking to acquire a lot of apartments in Seoul. So, they, because they believe that if they don't purchase an apartment now, they would never be able to purchase an apartment in the future. It is based on that fear that they acquire a lot of apartments. So, that is why 8% is also responding to market changes with innovation. So, we improved our existing products. And we have a deposit, a bank product that was launched in May. I'd like to explain briefly about this product. First is that there is a less loss stress, loss-related stress. And second is, you can actually make investment with one click, mobile, on mobile. And third is, you can withdraw the money anytime you want. But... But actually, the profitability, a return on profit is about three to four percent. It's a bit lower than the existing P two P products, lending products. Because during the COVID nineteen, we've seen two major investment trends. So there's been a lot of betting on the upside assets with a lot of upside potential. And the second was that a lot of people were investing in assets where we could secure liquidity. So for example, there's a lot of outstanding fund in the stock market. So it was either a matter of upside potential or liquidity during the COVID nineteen era. And we focused on the products to secure liquidity. That's why we developed this product. We released a beta product service. And for five hundred people with a cap of two hundred million, two million Korean won, we sold out other product and we managed to sell, sell out the account opening. And after that, we, ever since, we're also seeing an increasing demand in this product. So we believe that this product is fit for the COVID nineteen. And after the beta service, once it is successful, we're going to roll out for good the service into the market. So up until now, I mentioned about the major financial trends in the COVID era and how our company Eight Percent is responding to the trend with innovative product. Now, I would like to talk about, I don't know if there's going to be a post-corona era. A lot of people are talking about mid-corona, but anyways, eh, we have to prepare for the post-corona era and now the focus frame remarks on two aspects. First is digitalization and second is de-intermediation, post-intermediation. So there has been a large portion of offline financial services that are still, uh, still quite widespread. For example, like the PV centers, the offline was very important for this type of businesses. But because of COVID nineteen, even the PV businesses are being digitalized. Or the P two P method without any intermediary or any broker or agent is becoming very popular, so de-brokerage. So everything is now being connected with digital and it has become very important to be able to meet your climate. So Eight Percent, we provide an asset management application, a simple one-click transfer of money. And we also, we are also actually partnering with some major banks and internet banks. And we are also developing a similar, same APIs with existing banks to showcase very innovative models. And since the Online Investment Related Finance Act is implemented, it will have a very big impact on the institutional investors. Because it has actually provided the legal foundation for institutional investors to invest in P two P. So eighty percent of the investors in the US are the institutional, institutional investors in the P two P. I believe that that trend will also be the case in Korea as well in the near future. So fintech companies are adopting smart work systems and this is becoming more and more popular. And during the COVID nineteen, so we, Eight Percent also adopted a flexible working system. And you can see that we have leveraged a lot of collaborative tools and platforms to do work. And we did use collaborative tools in the past, but we did not have as many virtual meetings as now. We realized that virtual meetings are quite effective and even after COVID nineteen, I think the virtual meeting trend will continue. And not only in fintech, but also financial companies actually could not imagine working at home until now, before COVID nineteen. If it were not for COVID nineteen, of course, IT companies were used to working from home, but financial companies were not so. But because of COVID nineteen, they were obliged to do so, but they realized that it was not, it was quite effective as well. So that will, that is going to bring about a change to the financial companies. And the financial companies need to separate their networks because in order to protect the asset of the customers, they need to have an internet that is disconnected from the extranet. So there are some difficulties with regards to the smart work for the financial companies. But I believe that this will be a good business opportunity. How we are going to facilitate the network separation of the financial tech, financial companies will be an important business. So that we can better protect the network and better protect the information of our customers. Acent is very much interested in that kind of model or system. So if you have any good ideas, please let us know. Now this wraps up my presentation. So I mentioned about the contact free finance acceleration and the Eight Percent cases. We are going through a lot of difficulties, government, institutions, large companies, small companies and startups. I'm sure that everybody has a role to play. I hope that we will weather through this difficulty with a lot of wisdom and insight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for your presentation. So we were able to have a look at the P two P lending products of Eight Percent. And also he should mention about the network separation, which is the key word in the fintech sector. Thank you. Now moving on to the AI-related startup. Mr. Kim Dong Hwan from Forty Two Maru will be the next presenter. Mr. Kim, would you please go ahead?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kim Dong Hwan from Forty Two Maru. My presentation today is about the business strategy for the untact era and the post-corona. Although this is not a big buzzword in industry, I'm going to talk about some of the possible solutions that can be done in the field nowadays. And also I'm going to come up with some actual best cases and examples. Let me give you my introduction of our team. So for the last twenty, twenty years, we have been working for discharging and industry a deep learning which has been out in the market recently, has been used for our query as well. So we would like to understand the queries as accurately as possible, not just the structured, but also the unstructured data. And the only possible answers can be elicited from our platforms called the Data Service Chatbot. And also we have global record of our businesses. And as seen before, we have a lot of award-winning experiences. For example, the MRC Machine Learning Competition in Stanford University. And also we have attended those competitions. And also we jointly ranked number one along with Google for this machine reading competition. Also recently, Techstars London program was given to us as an awardee, which is an accelerator, the biggest size in Europe. So that means that we are just entering the European market nowadays as well. Since I'm talking about the post-corona virus era, while we are doing business, we cannot say that we are not affected by the pandemic either. Because we were having difficulties of moving around, you know, going to Europe or other places on business. That is why we are starting to have more business presences in the Southeast Asian countries like Singapore. Also, we have our source technologies. And rather than just focusing on a couple of companies only, as you see here, we have wide range of applications serving many customers. For example, the e-commerce call centers automobiles are our next areas of doing business. As may well known to you, work from home has been expanded because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Non-face-to-face or on-tech services have been increasing in size. They used to be in this market, but they are ever-growing nowadays after the pandemic. For example, in the past, in life insurance companies, the businesses have been done in face-to-face mode by ninety-six point eight percent. For the non-life businesses, they have the businesses with the meeting people by eighty-six point four percent. That is a story before the pandemic, but they have to move to the untact or non-face-to-face businesses. They have to have the tools to help them therefore. Also, the support has been made for this to happen. Let me give you immediate example that you can resonate yourself. Maybe some of you might be relevant to that. I'm not saying that you are the people who have, have been affected. But you know, we, you might have some questions regarding the issues where you have to go if you are infected, just in case, I'm talking about just in case. You might have a lot of questions and queries to the relevant public medical offices. But you might see the over, the inundation of the data flowing very quickly. So you can have some waiting time for such a long time. Therefore, that was kind of bottleneck that we experienced among the people. Then we found it very interesting to solve the problem. That is why we created a chatbot using AI technology so that the queries can be minimized in number by having the data collection and analysis. And also the response time can be reduced dramatically. Now, I'll be talking about the business cases and also the actual best practices here. So we have three areas of doing businesses here, as you see here. In relation to the actual businesses and companies, what we are doing is to make the businesses inside more efficient. Although they now have to go for the additional equipment, they can utilize better and more efficiently what they have. So they can have the further productivity. Also, because of the new environment and everything is very new to us, therefore the details can be missed out. Therefore, the risk detection should be made or risk prediction should be needed. So that's one thing that we are focusing our areas on. Another thing is about chatbot. The previous chatbots are working, were working, based on the queries, based on the rules and so on. They were called rule-based chatbots. However, from last year roughly, because of the technological advancement, they were voluntarily looking for the right answers even before being asked questions. So it's automatic system that AI just enables the chatbots to find the answers beforehand. Also thirdly, we have smart devices. So these kind of technologies are incorporated into the smart devices as well. Let me give you another first example, but use case. That's about the shipbuilding business. When you have the shipbuilding, you have the communications working very well between the shipowners and the shipbuilding docks. There have a lot of face-to-face meetings in the past when they have the ship built for the owners. They might have a lot of questions from the side of the shipowners and recently emails have been used frequently. So like in the past, the emails had to be analyzed in order to find the keywords. And they have to find out whether they are just adaptable or not, or they can be adapted after changing or modifying the content. However, our system, which after being used for the ship building shipyard, it will take about two days for the experienced ones. And it will take about five days for the juniors in the past while they were using the traditional ones. However, using our system and the query-based system, they can reply the answers within one hour. Anybody can do that. And also, in addition to that, they can also detect where there are any poison pills at all in these emails. Or they can check the fit to the specifications, whether their specifications are right to their needs or not. Another use cases for the financial company and the call center, the people are also using this tool and system in order to reduce the time to respond to the customers and the callers. In the past, they had to find the answers by clicking each and every one of these boxes in order to answer the replies from the customers. So they just showed, showed all the possible answers in a row. However, our system enables them to have a very big view and panoramic view altogether so they can find the answers immediately. Another application is for the lead test for the law school students. And also they had a lot of risks for having the redundancies of the questions and the passages for these questions in the test. Because of the legalities of these terminologies, they might have some errors and misunderstandings, but we can avoid those misunderstandings as well. Pleasureism can be also reduced as well for this program. Use case, the next one is about the smart factory. When we have the repairs in the factories, they had to have the data collection for the record of the repairing. Learning is needed in order to accumulate all this data. In the past, they didn't have the management of this kind of repairs and the repair histories and so on. All the solutions to the repairs and the problems were different depending on the level of skills of the operators. Also, depending on the time of the day, they had different solutions to the same problems or the issues. In the past, they had to check one by one by manual job because of the differences in this data. However, now we're using the AI technology in order to emulate what people are doing in order to find out and also collect and just arrange all the errors and troubles according to the severity. Also, another use case is for the help desk inside the companies. Inside companies, they have a lot of complaints to deal with, the issues and also the problems with the rest of the employees. A particular time of the day can be very crowded because of the just inundating questions. In order to solve out the bottleneck of time, we can use the chatbot to just clear up the questions. So in a way, we can say that it was kind of, it is a kind of idea that we're using avatar. One avatar, one person. That's another area we can do. And also if we are reduced with the unnecessary burdens of the jobs, I can be more productive in my way of working. I can be even more creative in doing this. So all these kind of detail redundancies can be solved out by chatbots like me. For example, the, while we're doing the non-face-to-face activities of our job, these chatbots will be very useful. Another area that we can use for the case will be the regulations and the supervision. We can check whether the compliance is well observed in this kind of a business activities through the regulation supervision. In the past, the people had to use their own force and power and time in order to know and understand what areas have been breached. But now we can use the AI system and chatbot to do that. Call centers and telemarketing is another area for the use case. From last year, there have been a lot of chatbots introduced in the company. And also in the past, we had to rely on manual jobs even though we had the chatbots. But chatbot technology has been improved to a great degree so that we don't rely on the manual jobs anymore. And telemarketing is also another area where telemarketers can be reduced with their burdens. The telemarketers, when they enter the businesses, some of them are more productive than others and some of them are less productive than others. So in that case, they wanted to know the reason why. The, in order to understand why they are doing better or than, or worse than others, they had to go through all the recordings and analysis and evaluation. However, this kind of evaluation of the telemarketers can be done by this kind of chatbots as well. Another thing I can show you is about the financial companies and the life insurance companies, they had misselling issues. After selling the businesses and products, they found that there was errors in selling and persuading the customers. They can proactively know what can be the areas of misselling before selling the products nowadays with the chatbot. That will be very useful as well. Another thing is about anti-money laundering practices. And this application can solve the international problems. In extreme cases between countries, because of the anti-money laundering breach and issues, they had to pay the fines of the multimillion dollars. In this case, if you use this chatbot against anti-money laundering, they can just check out whether they can have some breaches or non-compliances and so on. In the past, when they had to use the manual jobs by the people, they only took a lot of time. Time was spent more than needed, therefore they already lost the opportunity to get the chance of just catching up with these breaches. So another area, that's about the HR and recruitment. So this, this kind of recruitment chatbot can be used for clearing up the queries and questions from outside. Whenever they have the announcement of the new, new recruitment, they have to work on all these kind of queries. These chatbots can just answer all the questions from the applicants or candidates. Also, at the end of the year, the text issues can be solved out by using the chatbot as well. Because you know, end of the year is the season for the taxation. You can see another example of chatbot here that's used for the sales in the past, in the smartphones and the payment plan. The call centers or the customer centers were selling the services to the people who received the calls. But we're now using the chatbot, we're replacing these callers with chatbots. And also the inquiries from the outside has been reduced by one-fifth. And also, the inquiries from the outside has been reduced by one-fifth, so that all these questions have been already cleared up. Now you're looking at a lot of robotics applications as well. We have the Pepper, we have the Rabbit technology used for this robot robots, and they're answering the questions. The Rabbit, which is produced by Uncount, is a reader of books for children, the toddlers and the preschoolers. So these kind of robots can answer the questions spontaneously from the students and young children. They don't just read out from textbooks only. These technologies have been also used for the schools as well. Connected system has been used for the speaker as well. And also, we have the smart watch system. And also, connected car is another area. So when you have the test driving, you have kind of supervisor at the end of the backseat. And the explanation can be made by these people in the past. But this kind of chatbot at the back of your cars can answer your questions or guides you through the navigation and also the driving. So sometimes, because of the COVID-19, you're not allowed to enter a car with another person that you're not really sure about the infection. So this would be a very good chatbot to avoid you from being infected by COVID-19. So it was a very time-limited presentation, so I had to go through this very quickly. I'm very sorry about that. And if you have more questions, please contact me, I'll be answering the questions. Of course, that will be off online question and answer, but I'll be doing my best in order to answer your questions. Thank you.
So that was Mr. Kim. From forty-two Maru. So we're getting a lot of questions from the audience. And they're asking, you know, AI is a double-edged sword. And, you know, we will be really seeing a future where a robot will be sitting next to me at work. So actually, we're going to address these questions during the session focusing on work and job. Thank you very much for your interesting presentation, Mr. Kim. Now, moving on to the last part of today's session, it's about the digital healthcare. Now Lunet will have Mr. Saopam Sack, CEO, to have the presentation, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, very nice to see you. I am an MD and also CEO of Lunet. My name is Saopam Sack. Lunet is a company of making AI services. In two thousand thirteen, our company was incorporated. At that time, we had our team of the PhDs and MDs majoring artificial intelligence at that time. So we had a lot of ways of developing our businesses in the beginning. And we wanted to go for other businesses. And then later, we wanted to focus on the business areas that we can be the best. So that is the medical area that we wanted to be in. So last year, we had our conclusion that cancer is the most vulnerable attacking factor of the people. One-third of the people might catch a cancer within their lifetime when they live in. And also, twenty-five percent of the people can have the responses to the cancer treatment. So that is why we decided to focus on cancer. What do you think is the meaning for overcoming cancer? It's actually in itself, in theory, it's very simple. Cancer itself is a difficult thing to do, but you know, overcoming cancer is not that complicated because you have to have the very effective diagnosis in the beginning. Many of you might have had this test in order to be diagnosed for cancer, whether you didn't have it or not. Another thing or the next thing we have to do is to have the effective treatment. So that's it, the diagnosis and treatment. That's all about overcoming cancer. However, it is not accurate as you think because if you think of the lung cancer, even if you have the test, the test doesn't guarantee that you have hundred percent of accuracy because they have thirty percent of error rate already. Also, when you have the treatment, the response ratio to you is only twenty-five percent. It means that in the medical field, you have a lot of things that you have to improve upon. So that is the starting point where we had our businesses. So in the beginning, when we have the Lunet system, if we use the AI system for the diagnosis, this diagnosis has become more effective. So we are helping them to have more accuracy and the diagnosis and detection. So we have more than fifty percent of the cancer patients to be diagnosed earlier than before. The second thing, which is about the treatment, we also have Lunet Scope, which is able to have the additional immunotherapy to the fifty percent of cancer patients. So we have very accurate data about what kind of therapies they have to have according to the symptoms. For example, the immunotherapy, they have the record of having the more of the treatment for fifty percent of patients. For this kind of vision that we wanted to solve, so far, we have accumulated world-class artificial intelligence capabilities. For example, we have been designated as one of the AI one hundred, which is very well-known in sight. And also, we have been selected as one of the digital health one hundred fifty. Also, Davos Forum picked us as one of the technology pioneers twenty twenty. We also had a lot of award-winning experiences and we just exceeded and overdid the Google, IBM, Microsoft and so on and so forth. And just have been also carried the articles about our company as well. I'm not saying that that technology itself can solve all the problems of the medical areas. Therefore, we need more resources. That's why we had to partner with many other hospitals and other medical insurance medical companies. So far, we have had a very successful network of these partner companies, both as a research institutions, but also, and also the hospitals. We have been successfully using their resources, papers, theses in order to prove that they can be correctly improving our systems and results. Now, I'm going to give you how we are doing in terms of the diagnosis, how we can improve the effectiveness using AI in Lunet Insight. So using artificial intelligence, we are improving the readability capability by doctors. That is the core essence of what we are doing. As before, this has been proven already by the doctors. And if we have the x-rays on the particular areas, we had the readability performance of both by the physicians and the Lunet. We proved that the Lunet's readability is higher than the people. Also, what is important here is that when we had the readability of our system compared to the traditional machine system, our Lunet system has been higher in terms of the readability. It only means that the early diagnosis or detection of cancer can be possible. Let me give you another very good example in this slide. So if you see the case here, in two thousand sixteen, there was fifty-four-year-old man. He was diagnosed as cancer for the lung, the lung cancer phase three. And also, although he was diagnosed as normal beforehand for the previous three years, he wasn't proven to be okay. However, actually, using our system, that was different story because we were able to detect what he was developing over the years of three before being fully diagnosed as having the lung cancer. So he must have been fully recovered if he had used our Lunet system three years before he was fully diagnosed. And from last year, we were able to commercialize our systems in the early phases. Many of the companies and customers are using our systems. If I give you the numbers here, the paid customers are about one hundred thirty hospitals. And also, we have about three million analyses here in eighty different countries. And also, we have our partner companies like GE Healthcare and many other international medical companies. I've been talking about the cancer diagnosis and treatment using AI system. Now let's talk about what we are doing against the COVID-19 crisis. We are also trying to make contribution to solving the problems of COVID-19. Here's an example, as for the radiograph here. So we have about a total of what can cancer or the diseases that we detect, including the lung cancer. So the lung cancer has been added onto the machine learning system before being commercialized. If you look at the process of making diagnosis for the COVID-19, this is how they are doing. When the people who are suspicious of the COVID-19 come to the hospital or public center, they have to go through the PCR center, polymerase chain reaction system. They have to wait a couple of days, one or two days. In the meantime, they didn't know what to do, they just went home. And while not being confirmed about being a case, they can do whatever they want. If they did, the traceability can be problem. He must have spread, spreading the disease in that one or two days. However, using our system, we don't have to let him wait or her wait for a day or two because it takes only five to ten minutes before deciding whether that person is a case or not. Immediately after that detection, we of course can do the following procedures according to the results. Now we are exporting the system to other countries so that other countries can use the system. As a result of that, I hear that many of the customers are very happily using the systems at the moment. Especially those countries that have been plagued by the bigger number of cases than Korea. They also suffer the shortage of the medical people. Therefore, this kind of system was very helpful for them to expedite their systems according to the surveys by the customers. Last but not least, I'm going to talk about the applications of AI to the treatment of cancer. When you try to have the treatment of cancer, first of all, you have to use the radiograph to know where they are in the tissue. And also, ultimately, you have to have the tissue test. Through the tissue test, you can identify whether this person has cancer or not. This kind of process is quite complicated and it's very difficult to analyze. At the moment, we have a lot of physicians who are working with us. This is quite complicated, they said it's only the yes or no to the cancer reaction or not. We cannot know further information. So into this like data, if you use the AI system for kind of detection system, we can even know whether this person will be reacting to a particular drug or not. So that is the system we have developed. It is still under development, we have not commercialized yet. But I'm going to disclose today what we have been doing. So far, we have the forty-two people who are reacting to the immunotherapy agent out of one hundred only if they are stage four lung cancer patients in the past. However, using the AI system used together, that number of forty-two was increasing to sixty-two out of one hundred case, stage four can, lung cancer products when they are using the immunotherapy system. So if they want to have the more therapies, they can decide accordingly. So this is helping the treatment of the cancer for many patients. So far, our company has been working on the cancer diagnosis, treatment and COVID-19. However, in the future, we're going to expand our business areas further beyond these three applications. We will be able to apply the AI applications to all kinds of diseases or parts of the innovative medical practices. Our goal is to be immersed in every corner of the medical industry. And ultimately, customized medical treatment can be possible as well. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you. That was Mr. Sa, CEO of Lunet. And through the AI system, the medical area will be also renovated a lot. And that gives me a lot of optimism. I'm looking forward to hearing more success stories from Lunet in the future. Through this session, we can also see many of the ideas coming from the new startups. And some of the startups are just arising by overcoming the COVID-19 situations. And there are the live examples which have been really surviving the COVID-19. So the afternoon session will just move on with other presentations and keynote speeches and so on. So from now on, please allow me to have a ten-minute break before rearranging the podium here for the sessions afterwards. But please stay tuned, don't go away because we will be back in ten minutes.